So let's call tonight's meeting to order, so welcome. Let's stand and recite the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
So is everything audio wise coming through for everybody on their electronic gear? So everybody can hear fine, great. So our mission statement, Dodge City Community College provides a student centered learning environment where students can achieve their educational, personal, and career goals. At the start of every meeting, we always ask for remarks from the audience, and so this time around, since we're doing this virtual, we sent out and requested comments, and at this time, we have received no public comments to address the trustees. So now I'll move on in the agenda to the approval of the minutes, and I will stand, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented or modified.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a motion to approve from Dan?
I'll second.
And then second from Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. And if you can signal if I asked that question, a thumbs up or something, or just I made sure I caught it. So and a second from Kathy. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Got it? And opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move on to reports to the trust of the trustees. So Kathy, you're in the top corner of Hollywood Squares.
So I invited for the break bunch, one of the two. Okay, I was, I'm excited to see what Dr. Forgy has at some point when we get to hear about the retention study for fall to spring. I'm anxious for that report at some point. And then David Aguero made me think completely different about teaching because he said he was having to work between time zones. So hats off to every teacher that is trying to work with their students, and you also are teaching them, but you're working between time zones. So I had not thought of that, so I really appreciate and applaud them.
Excellent. Thanks Kathy. Maya?
I would just, I said the other day that I thought this month's reports were outstanding from the VP and other members of the staff. Fascinating all the activities that have gone on to make education continue to happen for our students. People have outdone themselves, and I wanted to say a very loud thank you, and I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Jim?
Yeah, I want to add to what Maya said, that I really feel good that the administration is still working and acting like, you know, so many people just put life on hold, and they've been moving forward, and I really appreciate that, that energy they still have and drive ready to get going back hopefully sooner than later this fall.
All right, thanks Jim. Kelly? You're on mute, Kelly. You're on mute? Kelly, you're on mute.
Okay. Okay, just ditto some of the same things that were being said on that. I did have a talk to one of the city commissioners today, and I brought up an interesting point because I was going through the city county commissioners, see if they were having any better luck getting some PPEs. And one of them brought up the question or thought, does our nursing program have any PPEs in stock that we could resell right now, knowing that we got time to restock these for the fall? I don't know who we'd need to contact and stuff on that, but I know my daughter works at the hospital, and you know, I don't even have any idea if our nursing program has any N95 masks. Those are still in big shortage. We've had them on backorder for the last nine weeks, and haven't got any in, so we're double masking with surgical level grade three masks when we work on patients. And so he brought that up, and I don't know what the nursing program has. They should have some things, and I would think along those lines. If we don't, then we need to look at start to order some of those things, because those are things that are going to be necessary for anything we do in nursing and allied health down the road.
All right, great points, Kelly. And Dr. Tatro is shaking his head, yes, so I'll let him address the board.
So I am going to check with Michelle Haley right now to see what we do have available, and hopefully have an answer back from her over text.
Thank you.
Bill?
I just want to reemphasize what Mia and Jim and Kelly, you know, the staff has just gone over and above what I expected would happen. I think everything went off without, without any holdup for the kids to get online, and it's just, thank you.
Okay. Dan?
I want to also thank all the faculty and staff and administrators for the work they've done since this thing hit. It's kind of a big shock. I know teachers trying to teach from home is tough. It's a lot different than standing in front of your kids. And also want to thank all of you, staff and faculty and board members for your condolences. I had brother pass away about a week ago, and we had a small service in Wichita for him, only about 10 people were able to go, so it was a tough time, but yeah, thank you for your condolences.
But Dan, I'm sorry to hear about that.
Thank you.
On another note, just basically, and I preface up at our work session yesterday about the activity that Harold, that your administration is doing, outreach, reaching out to our neighboring schools. So I'd like to reiterate that today, about some of the feedback I'm getting, and this isn't exactly the thing we need to do, and so applaud all of your efforts for doing so. This is exactly the role I think most of the, everybody on the board believes that we need to be doing, and the community believes that as well. And I'm glad to see the college really engaging our schools into what roles that we can help them with, so thank you for doing that. And then just, I don't want to reiterate everything everybody else said, but you know, just kudos to what we're doing. We've made major adjustments, and I'm anxious to see what happens come fall. And so we'll, whatever happens, we will adjust and adapt and do what we need to do. So with that, Dr. Nolte?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start off, I'm going to ask Bev to speak about COVID in a second, but I want to congratulate one of our board members, which he just found out yesterday, Jim Lewis. Kudos to Jim. He was selected as the, one of the future of Higher Education Council, and it's a big, big opportunity for us in Western Kansas. It's amazing how many trustees wanted that. Everybody give my hand. And it was, it was, the legislature directed the Kansas Board of Regents to create a comprehensive three-year, five-year, 10-year plan for higher education on the 2021 legislature. In order to obtain the necessary wide range input necessary for such a task, an advisory council will be formed to review the delivery systems of higher education in Kansas. The council will make recommendations to the board to ensure that education beyond high school is accessible to Kansas, and the delivery system is sustainable and allows the nation's. And he is the only trustee that is put on there from the community colleges.
Yeah.
So that's out of the 19 community colleges in Texas schools, he's the only one.
They must know how many questions he asks.
I'm kind of excited.
Well, it doesn't hurt that he knows Blake Flanders very, very well, and our own Shane Bangater is the board region. So everybody was asking me who they thought it was going to be, and I kind of thought I knew who it was, so I'm proud of you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Trustee Lewis, do us well, okay?
I will.
Bring us lots of money to Ford County and others. That's, that's my first conversation, and then Bev, I want you to kind of talk about COVID-19 just a little bit.
Okay, thank you, President Nolte. As several trustees have pointed out over the last few months, we have the name "community" in our, the word "community" in our name, and certainly I think we are a community partner in this whole COVID issue and concern that we're fighting in Ford County right now. We have been working for about almost two weeks now, every day, and sometimes in the evening, working with setting up an organized structure and partnership with several entities that are at the state level, and at the federal level, and certainly at the county level. You may recall, one of our first responses was we helped first responders shelter in Coleman Web Hall when they were engaged with a person who was going to be tested or not. So we housed several first responders, and I think that was very helpful to them. The next request that we had came through the state, and they asked that we be a site to house persons who need to be isolated because they've been in contact with a person that's confirmed positive, and also that we need to house persons that may be a confirmed COVID case. So we have two sites, and we are working in partnership with the Ford County officials and the DHS, Department of Homeland Security, and other entities, the National Guard. We are going to be backup site, and this was confirmed today. So there are two off-site locations off the campus, and we are then the backup site. Coleman Web Hall will be used first, and then second, we will house persons in Sheldon if need be. Right now, we have no one, so we haven't started housing anyone on that. We will in another location that's separate from those, house first responders that are from the community if we need to do that. So we're happy to put that back in place. And then we are going to be having meetings every morning for an extended time, so that we're all coordinating together, and it's working, I think, very well. And so we're happy, we had a great response from our campus in finishing, packing all of the belongings that the students had, getting the rooms, getting the belongings shipped out, getting the rooms cleaned, and so they're ready to go over there. We also will be providing food service through Great Western Dining, and President Nolte and Glennon Forgy negotiated this contract with legal review from Glenn Curbs, and then of course, it was taken care of by Chairman Harshberger. I heard they had to track you down, and they found you, and so you reviewed it, and then I know the board is familiar with the document I'm talking about. So all that is in place, and I can tell you that our community members and the persons that are working on the front lines of all this are very appreciative of the college's involvement. So that kind of concludes it. The meals that we will be providing will be not only for our campus, but also the two other sites, and they will be delivered by the National Guard at the other sites. So all that was being coordinated at 8:30 a.m. meetings that we'll have daily, and we'll continue that for as long as, as we need be. So if anyone has any questions, please let us know. Again, as of today, it is just now being coordinated, and we do not have any persons that we're housing, but they have told us that that may be changing rapidly.
Any questions for that? I do.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, sorry Kathy. So I'm glad you brought up that this was a backup, or a backup site.
That's correct.
So, you know, people are asking the question, I think we're now up to how many in Ford County?
500.
500? And so if we're a backup, they're being held elsewhere, is this a mandatory quarantine, or, or what, voluntary?
Okay, it is voluntary, and so I think they're, they're just now getting to where they're offering that, and so they're expecting that they'll have some response. They just started it at Seward County and at Garden City, and so they are starting to have some response, and I think we'll see that some people will choose to do that.
So you anticipate that we will start to see some?
Yes, they said that after the two sites fill up that are off, off campus, then they think that we will still house people. They just don't know how soon, but we'll get morning updates at 8:30 a.m. every morning.
So we have Great Western basically on call then to provide the meals. Is that creating an issue?
Well.
I mean, how's that working there?
Okay, well, I do think we have to communicate with John Walker every day, and he kind of has them on standby, and of course, they haven't been called in. There was a couple days they came in anyway because they were anticipating it, so they kind of been on a hurry up and wait mode, but I think that that will dissipate, and we will have some people, is what they're telling us.
So you know, they're doing food preparation, and so they have to have inventory on hand.
Right.
So I just wondered what kind of issues that would create if we're just wait and then delay, and then what have you.
Yes.
Hope that's not creating any problems.
Yeah, I think Glennon may be speaking more directly with John Walker than I am, but I think so far, for example, when we have a meeting where we have the raps that we have tonight, or whatever, they've been able to cover the inventory. But I, I do think it could become a problem if there's a prolonged wait much longer, and so we did have some discussions with them about that this morning, and I think they understand, so. I hope that will be resolved pretty quickly.
All right, fair enough. Any questions?
Well, I'm just saying, if we do have food that's on order that's there, and we find out that there's not a need to bring them into our facility, that somehow we could find a way to have that food used and prepared and given to first responders, or medical personnel, or people that could use it, just so it doesn't go to waste. We've been seeing too much waste in this country with food right now, so if we can do something with it, if it gets to that close to point where it's expiring its usefulness, we need to find a way to utilize that for the community.
I think that's a good idea, Kelly. I, my husband went to Walmart up here today, and there was no meat in Walmart at all here in Lawrence.
Chairman Harshberger, today when I looked on the map of COVID-19, there was 600 in Ford County.
600, right.
When VP Tamont was talking, it sounded like we just started this two weeks ago, but Maya and I sat with committee way in March, in spring break, and VP Tamont had started working then on everything that's happening now, and I'm so glad our college did that because we were ahead of the game.
And I think that was represented, Dr. Roger Marshall, in his comments in the paper after turning the packing plants and being out here with KDHNE. He said that our operation in Dodge City was one of the best, most organized, smoothest running things he'd been around, so that's kudos to our staff here at the college and to the whole community on working together in our partnership.
Yeah Kathy, I just, I was going to correct myself, it's 600 plus one debt so far, so that's unfortunate. Early literacy, like you and Chris were involved in that, can you talk to them?
Sure, do you want me to do that now, or make that as part of the board agenda item?
I would do part of the, yeah.
Yes.
Hold off on that. Just this week, we're going to be talking about strategic enrollment. I know we have a meeting with, with Joe Baumann about, about our strategic enrollment, and if you guys could have drove out here probably a couple of days ago, I tell you what, it was interesting. I had JD Gilbert and Dr. Fred Durkson and Sharice Teeman, we were all sitting by the, out at the lake, talking about what we were going to do. So I just appreciate, kudos to those guys and ladies, that we, that we had this kind of relationship that we can all work well together. And so I just want to know that there's, that there's a lot of hands in this, and we're all trying to work together to make this a better place, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. We'll move on to the completion of the agendas. Is there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
On item B, I'd like to pull numbers six and nine under personnel for discussion.
Six and nine, okay. And then on B as well, you see there's additions 10 and 11. Does everybody that's online see those additions?
Yes.
Okay, so you have those, and those are on items 10 and 11 on the consent. So with those two changes, do I have a motion to approve the agendas as, as modified?
Don't move. Kelly?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lewis. Okay? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Did you get the second from Bill? All right. I got out of order there a little bit, but that's okay. And so let's move on to other reports. You've all presented great reports, and Kathy brought that up, and I was going to ask if anyone had any additions, and Jane is really raising her hand, so she's anxious.
Thank you. At the work session yesterday, Vice Chair Ramsauer asked about the art department's plan for their exhibit, their end of the semester show, and Jennifer Nolan is there on the screen, ready to give us the details of how that virtual show will happen. Thank you.
Jennifer, you have the show.
It's so good to see you all.
You too.
Thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank you all for your support. This is the craziest thing I've ever have to, ever have had to experience in my teaching experience, going online with all my classes, including studio classes, and I am not, I am not at work right now, just FYI. I use a little Zoom magic here, but it's definitely been interesting, and our students are persevering, and they are getting their work done, and I'm just amazed at what they've been able to do in these circumstances. We did make plans to go ahead with our student art show this semester. It will be virtual, online. I'm a member of several different discussion groups online with other three-dimensional art professors across the United States, and everybody's kind of facing the same challenges. You know, how do you teach ceramics online? How do you do metal smithing? What do you do? And so one of the things that, of course, everyone was being faced with as it's coming to the end of the school year, is how do you handle your exhibitions? And so we have our annual student art show at the end of every semester, and so, you know, our students were, you know, wondering what we were going to do. And so everyone's going online, and there's all kinds of different types of websites and ways to facilitate that, and we didn't really feel like we needed something really wild and crazy with all the bells and whistles. And so Google has come up with a wonderful way to create a presentation using Google Slides, and so it actually will look like they're walking into a gallery, and you'll see art on the walls of the gallery, and you can click on those, and it'll take you to a close-up with a little informational tag with the student's information and everything. So it'll kind of be like a simulation of the student art show. So we're having students finish up their work this week, sending me images, and I'll be compiling that all together and putting it all together, and we'll do the best we can, what we've got.
Will some of the art be for sale?
We decided to forego that aspect of the show, and we are going to invite all of our students to go ahead and bring back that work next semester in the fall, and show that work in person in the gallery, so they'll have an opportunity to sell their work then. We just thought, you know, it wasn't very wise to have artwork and things being, you know, pool meeting and to sell things, and this is very complicated right now, so we thought we would just forego that aspect of the show.
I would just like, I'd like to, I think that it'll be really interesting, and I plan on taking, taking that in and stuff. That may be something, even when we go back to having kids on campus and doing that live, that'd be something we could market to get out to those people that can't get out, and do that right along with the, the in-person show, especially if you're going to be able to add little bits of information about maybe what the medium was, or how they decided what they were doing. I think that would be an excellent deal to tie in with that, and a good way for marketing the art as well.
Right, yes. I think it would be a great thing in the future to be able to add, like, the students' artist statements, maybe a little bio, you know, that's part of being an artist, you need to, those writing skills, need to be able to talk about your artwork and market yourself, and so that's a way we can kind of tie that in.
And I would say you expand.
With our foundation.
Yes.
I was just going to add, excuse me, add that that would be a good marketing tool for looking for new students that are interested in the college, telling them this is coming up, and show them what we can do, and how we can present their works, and it'd be something we could contact any prospective students in high school still that were interested in the department.
I think you're right. I think we're really kind of learning a lot of new things that we can do with technology right now, even though we're kind of during it, doing it under a lot of stress and duress at the moment, but we're learning things that we can do when we have more time, when we're not so stressed out, and when we can think, plan, plan a little bit further in advance. But yes, these are some things that we can take with us into back to normal times and do a little bit expansion on what we normally do.
Thank you.
Well, Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Jennifer.
All right, I'm going to get out of here. I'll let you guys tend to business.
You don't want to stick around?
I'll watch. We don't need to look. Unless you want to look at me a lot longer, I don't know.
Absolutely.
My still photo.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I'm going to go let the family out of the basement now, so.
Thank you.
They've been there all day, right?
Thanks for having me. Bye-bye.
Jane, do you want to talk about what we talked about yesterday, and about the speech and with the area schools?
So working with Dr. Tatro, we're reaching out to high schools in the area who are members of the SkyCam Consortium, and that's a group of high schools who are delivering classes collectively in areas that they need but can't provide with their current faculty on staff. And so SkyCam is, for those of us who have a history in the area, is a newer version of ITV, using different technology and a little more efficient ways of delivering the class from one site to satellite areas throughout the region. And we are, we do have a speech faculty who's committed to delivering speech that way to area high schools, in the, high school students, excuse me, in the fall, and we're very excited about that. Clayton, I understand will be working with SkyCam to set up the technology that we'll need to deliver that. So it's a great way to help students in the high school setting earn courses and credit in course areas that they need for graduation and for further study.
Okay, great. Any questions on this, you know, the speech or the SkyCam program?
Exciting.
Right. It is, I think, I am, you know, it's like, this is where, you know, what roles, what work can we help and provide assistance in this, so this is exactly what I alluded to earlier. I'm very excited about this. All right, any other reports to the board?
Just had a text back from Michelle. The vast majority of our PPE had been given to a nursing home, so she was going to double check to make sure we don't have anything else, but she'll come in tomorrow and double check that, but we think that we've given everything else appropriately.
And then Kelly's.
Yeah, so Kelly, I think your point is well taken, that it's probably time for us to get in the queue.
Right.
For a restock for the fall.
Very good.
Excellent. Okay, let's move on to board action items. So first one up is the early literacy grant, so Dr. Tatro?
Absolutely, thank you. This is a project that we've been working on literally since December. We had an opportunity working with USD 443 to put together a grant that is targeted at early childhood literacy for eight specific schools and eight specific communities around the state. Working with Dodge City Public Schools, they had multiple reason to ask us to consider our participation in being the lead agency on this grant. When you think about Dodge City Community College literally being the premier When you think about Dodge City Community College literally being the premier daycare facility in terms of the, the city of Dodge City and Ford County, it makes some sense. And, and then when you look at, um, Dr., when you look at Lorna Ford's, um, resume in terms of her experience as an early childhood educator, um, we were excited to be, um, the lead agency on this grant. The grant was successfully awarded, um, $100,000 for three years, $300,000 total. Um, we will be able to benefit from the grant in terms of the college directly with some offset of Lorna's salary, as well as about two-thirds of the grant dollars going directly to early childhood activities throughout the community. There is actually a pretty, um, lengthy network of early childhood, um, partners in Ford County. This grant, though, gives us opportunity to strengthen the partnership and tie in those partners more directly. So, we're excited for that. Public school has been very helpful in terms of helping us with the narrative for the grant, helping us for data for the grant, and really excited for the kickoff. So, we had the official, as Dr. Nolte indicated, we had the official kickoff yesterday. Obviously, COVID is changing the face of what that grant looks like. Um, the grant was supposed to start April 1st. Um, that's changed already, um, in light of COVID and the kickoff. Um, we anticipate that most of the activity will probably get kicked off about August of this coming year. So, we know that there will be a delay. In some ways, that gives us more time to ramp up and get even better prepared, um, and then we will just concentrate at those activities otherwise. But, um, talked with Lorna today, she's excited for the opportunity, um, and, and really thrilled that we can be, um, as we've said at least twice already tonight, a real part of the community engagement piece, um, for Dodge City Community College.
Part of her grant base for her salary.
It does. It does.
Okay. And just, I think it's important, uh, to point out there's no match required.
There is absolutely no match required. Um, there's no commitment in terms of the college, in terms of either in-kind commitment or actual real dollar cost. Um, so this is a, a huge opportunity for us.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Tetro?
No, as I said today in our, in our meeting, um, Lorna Ford, we, because she is an outstanding qualified person to handle this grant. I was real glad to read everything that, and that she has behind her name. So, I think we're fortunate to work with 443 on this.
I would agree.
I was impressed with the grant, what it's written. It really, it really covers a lot of, a lot of material, a lot of things to be done.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Great for Dodge City and Dodge City Community College.
Yes.
Anything further? Do I have a motion to approve?
That's a move.
Dan made the motion. Do I have a second? Jim Lewis, second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Probably do more recording than any. Okay, motion carried. Okay, next up, we'll do the tech fees.
And hopefully, everybody has both pages of the, um, tech ed program fee schedule. The first page starts with agriculture and ends with welding. The second page starts with allied health and ends with electrical technology. Um, I am making some assumption there, both in terms of climate and energy control and electrical technology, which are on the agenda later. So, um, I apologize for that presumption, but if we're going to do this, we need to make sure that we're covered that way. We were asked and directed by the Campus Board of Regents to actually submit our tech ed fee schedule, um, in February. Obviously, we were not in a position yet in terms of uniform bids or quotes, looking at the cost of PPE. So, what you're going to see in a couple different places on this schedule, it talks about the book cost, for instance, um, where it says varies and at cost. K-BoR has very specific guidelines that say, as we well should, that we will not charge any more than book costs to students. The way that we were able to put in the uniform cost, because we hadn't selected uniform vendors yet, was basically to put a dollar amount in there and say not to exceed. So, on both of those areas, there can be some flexibility as long as we go down, rather than go up in terms of, of the cost of those items. You're also going to see there that those items that are required of the students, that the students provide, such as work boots and a wireless device for building construction. Um, we've got work boots for diesel technology. Um, if you look at early childhood ed, um, they're responsible for their own TV skin test and their health assessment. Um, we have worked very diligently to keep these fees low on purpose, um, and to keep the cost to the student low on purpose. Um, one of the new factors as we go into this next year will be the high school students with the Excel and CTE Senate bill funding. Um, as Dr. Nolte and I have talked multiple times, um, along with Dr. Forghey, um, the funding coming back from the state is valuable to the college, but if students can't afford to enroll in the program, nobody's helped from that. But we need to keep the cost low enough that we're not losing money on those items, that yet students can afford to enroll in the classes they so desperately need.
Do we have any questions for Dr. Tetro?
Great thing about it also is SB 155 for high school students. Uh, that's the one area, I can promise you, we're looking at maybe a 10% cut in the college budget. But SB 155 is one of those of people that, that we all feel like is going to stay there because that is part of the high school budget and so we feel good about that.
I just want, just to reiterate what Jim said.
You want, you want to bring in Kristina for which one?
On the uniform.
Uh, yeah, yeah, if you want to, for sure.
We could, if she's still outside. Kelly, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate what Jim said last night, let's get the same logo on everything, let's have a good brand on it. So, everything, everybody relate, no matter what the uniform looks like, and we'll all relate back to our DC3 tech program or whatever logo we come up with. So, I think that's going to be good marketing for us.
And I would agree. And I think, um, Kelly, that we'll be able to bring to you a couple samples to, um, the May meeting and, and get some board feedback on, on what that new logo should look like. I'm really excited, um, that the board is endorsing the idea of not only a, a consistent, um, logo, which I think is extremely valuable, but, but seems to be really behind the idea of having a tech logo as part of that brand. So, thank you for that opportunity as well.
I like the idea that, uh, the faculty helped pick, you know, the uniforms. I think that was great, but there has to be something like Kelly just said, it brings it all together, you know, that unification part of it.
Absolutely. And, you know, we're, we're still in discussion in terms of, you know, does, does the uniform just say the tech brand, right? Or does it say the tech brand with criminal justice underneath or agriculture underneath? We don't want it to be so wordy that you, you lose sight and it becomes too big in terms of a just emblem. But at the same time, we're trying to, to give the, the program students some ownership in their own program.
Less, less is more.
Absolutely, I hear you.
Uh, we brought in Ms. Heselhors from Foundations and she has something to tell us on the, on the category of uniforms.
A couple days ago, I-
Can, can you hear her?
Can you hear me, everybody? With some mic.
Yes, might step up a little closer to the, the mic there. Right there in, on, in front of our four view.
Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, a couple days ago, I have, I created, um, a campaign on social media regarding text to give and within our accounting system, we created a, a student relief fund, so to speak. So, if there are some students that are unable to afford uniforms, if there are students that are having issues with books or something's going on anywhere on campus, we've had a lot of requests for this over the last three years and we finally have, have the ability to be able to do that. We don't have any funds in it yet, but we're starting to get those, um, donation requests out there for that. So, we're hoping to have some sort of, it's kind of like a benevolent fund, like what the college has, only a little bit more broad so we don't have to, um, limit it so much. So, if we've got somebody that's got some issues purchasing an instrument or purchasing uniforms or purchasing books or something like that, this is going to be designed to be able to do that. And I'm hoping to be able to get a significant amount of funds in there, but this was just created a couple days ago. So, as of today, it's got a zero balance, but we're, we're working on that.
Well, appreciate your efforts and this is part of what was said yesterday, you know, we're not going to let the, this type of thing be an impediment.
Exactly.
Prevent a student from participating in these programs.
And just a follow-up comment on that, Mr. Chair. Um, we have communicated, I have personally communicated to all the counselors and the principals of all of our service area schools, that if they know of students where, who the, the fee schedule and the fee cost is an issue, to please let us know. And we would work to talk about charge ships for exemptions because we don't want the fees to be an impediment to those students as well.
Be proactive with that.
Absolutely.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I went, I would like to say that yesterday when we were talking in our, our workstation about the logo and, and the uniforms, when I was at the hot, not too long ago before all of this started, we had a group of students walk down the hall and they all had on their, um, whatever you call them, their work clothes. And there was the emblem of Dodge City Community College. And the pride I felt in that thing, it, it's unbelievable because that's our students out there for our population. And so, I, I just wanted to say, I was so proud of seeing that.
Well, if you, if you just dovetail that to the college as a business and that is our product, an educated student is our product, and yes, we are going to take great pride in seeing that out in the community. So, it speaks volumes to us. Great.
And we need to grow around, mostly in the medical side.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the, uh, fee schedule for next year?
I'm moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was mya. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. We'll move on to the purchase of the, uh, daycap truck, trucks for the CDL program.
So, I am grateful, and I know Brian Johnson, our instructor coordinator for truck driving, is grateful as well, that, um, we had the opportunity to put out bids for, um, semi-tractors for the, the CDL program. Up to this point, we have had one driving truck, um, for each class. Um, now, ran it, granted, we only have one instructor, but at the time, when, when that truck goes down, if it needs service, if there's any issues, um, we have had to, um, resort to actually renting a truck, leasing a truck. Um, we've had issues where we've had to borrow a truck. So, the opportunity for us to have more than one vehicle is extremely important. Um, with Dr. Forghey's help, with Andy Nolan's help, with Justin Herger's help, we were able to put bids out, um, and put a competitive bid, um, proposal package together. Um, I'm excited to say that Truck Center, um, was the low bid, um, for the two, um, daycabs that we are recommending purchase. Um, Justin Herger has done a nice job of itemizing the background information, the current considerations. I do want it known that Kevin Taylor, Kevin Taber is online, um, on the Zoom call right now, if you have any questions for him. But just really pleased and impressed with, um, he and the relationship that we're forming with Truck Center and their support of this program. So, um, I'd be happy to, to either yield to Kevin or if you've got any questions of him or I, um, but this is going to be a good thing.
I, I do have to comment. I've known Kevin for a long time and his family. Um, but when Kevin graduated high school, he wanted something like this and he had to go to Pittsburgh, Kansas in order to get his training for it. So, I know that that family and Kevin, their heart has been in trying to get something here for the locals for a long, long time.
And he is from Dodge City, Kansas, right?
Yes, he is.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, he's online, but he's still on mute, so, okay. Any questions on the truck purchase, purchase as being proposed? And, uh, one is, is an automatic.
Right. So, the industry itself, um, is moving to about 80% automatic. And when we had conversation with our local beverage industry specifically, when you think about Budweiser, um, you think about Glaciers, you think about Pepsi, um, the vast majority of their drivers are going to automatic transmissions. So, there is a restriction that goes on in the full CDL when they require just the automatic. Um, but we think that that's the direction the industry is moving, particularly the way that the local industry is moving. So, one, we want to make sure we have an automatic vehicle that they can train on. And two, that we think that there's a way to expedite the endorsement, um, with an automatic and maybe actually serve more students that way.
Okay.
I have a-
All right.
If, if he can come on, with this diesel, not only does he do semis, but will he be able to do like people's motor homes?
Like school buses.
You're, you're talking about it in terms of our, our, our ability to teach CDL?
Yeah, because there's a lot of, um, when they're working on them, I'm hoping that he gets into that business where he wants to come in and help us with everything.
And you're, and you're talking about Kevin in general?
Yes.
Truck Center, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know if we lost him, we can't see his picture, we can only see the, um, his name.
Okay. I see that as a, a really good, um, joint endeavor.
Well, he has been a superb partner and if he can hear me, thank you, Kevin, very much.
Yeah, I'm with you, Kathy, this Jim, that we, uh, build that relationship not just from the CDL part, but also from the diesel technology part.
Yes, yes.
There he is.
Hey, hey, sorry about that, guys.
I'm bragging on you, Kevin.
No, sorry, my phone locked up and I couldn't get it to do anything, uh, but it finally got it. I don't know what I did, but I closed it down and reopened it, it started working, so. No, I think that, um, no, we had that, that Zoom call the other day with, uh, with some of the industry leaders, um, here in the local community and I think it went really well. Uh, we're, we at Truck Centers, Truck Center Companies in Dodge City, um, we just celebrated our, you know, one-year anniversary with Truck Center Companies, but, uh, it's, uh, it's been pretty good so far and we, we are real happy to, to be working and help you guys on, uh, not only the training side with Brian and the CDL program, but also the diesel program with Colby Klein. So, uh, I think it's going to be a good, a good partnership and we look forward to help you out.
Excellent. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Any, any questions for Kevin, uh, now that we have him online?
Well, just to, just to thank you for waiting as long as we could to make the decision and holding them trucks nice.
Well, that's, that's, uh, that's kind of the beauty of, uh, having the inventory that we do and also the partners incorporate, they, they allowed me to set those trucks completely aside for you guys and, uh, and kind of push this deal off until, especially with the unknowns right now, so. But, um, with, you know, $300 million in inventory, it helps, so.
Yep.
Yes, there Jim, they have inventory.
300 m- m- million.
M- m- million. Yeah, okay. So, with that, uh, everybody good? I, do I have a motion to approve the purchase? Which will come out, uh, capital outline, right?
Yeah, come out of the tech capital outline.
Yeah, tech capital outline. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Bill? I'll second.
I have Dan as the motion to approve. Do I have a second, Kathy? Is that a second, Kathy? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Dog, dog that down. Okay, motion carried. All right, we'll move on to the commercial lease.
So, what you have in front of you, um, there could be a couple talking points with this lease by the time we end up getting, um, through the conversation. This is an opportunity for us to, um, potentially relocate our nursing program to the space that was previously occupied. that was previously occupied. Um, it's, it's now getting ready to be vacated by the school district in what was called the learning center space. Um, just over twelve thousand square feet that is really well defined for a new program to come in. It would fit our needs very well in terms of potential classroom spaces, office spaces. Um, with the work of the district and, and what they did to build out the space, we've got a very nice technology infrastructure in there as well. The facility need is important because if we are going to do a couple of things, we're going to need more room. First and foremost is to look at the expansion of the nursing program. Um, in order to get us to our, our maximum capacity of the four B slots that are given to us by the Kansas State Board of Nursing, um, we literally don't have enough room in the Allied Health Building. So this piece would be extremely valuable in that. And then the other side of this is as we talk about the Senate bill piece in terms of bringing on new programs, um, we're intending to bring on a program called Healthcare Technology that could start as early, it's intending to start as early as this fall. And then lobotomy that would likely start in January. Um, I included, um, in your packet, the pro forma that we did early on in January, um, with Healthcare Tech to show that, um, with the high school enrollment alone with Healthcare Tech, um, we should be easily able to afford, um, the new lease for the new space. A couple of different items that have come up and some of this was conversation from yesterday. Um, there is one piece that the owner, Rusty Gurkin, um, is a little bit concerned about. And I've already visited a little bit with Glenn, um, and seemed to be okay with the answer, assuming that the Dr. Nolte is okay with me sharing this. But there is a question about right of assignment, um, in terms of, of the lease arrangement. And if, and number 10, um, on the item, um, in terms of the lease itself, there is a statement at the bottom of point number 10 that talks about, um, the college basically having, um, the ability to approve the lessor's right of assignment. So essentially, the way the lease is currently written, that was written by Glenn on behalf of us, um, the way the lease is written now, it would say that we would have the approval authority over Mr. Gurkin if he were to sell the building or to do anything with that space. So Mr. Gurkin is asking for that last sentence in item number 10, uh, which on my page is this page fifty-two, to be removed. I've talked with Glenn. Glenn is okay if the board decides to remove that. Um, that would primarily, um, come into play if the board was the lessor rather than the lessee. So Glenn seems to be okay with that. And then just another comment there, uh, Mr. Gurkin is comfortable with a five plus five if we decide not to do, uh, my ten year lease. So Dr. Nolte and, and Carla and I talked this morning. We decided rather than to confuse the issue and look at different options, we go ahead and leave the lease as is for tonight. And then you all can direct us in terms of your pleasure, in terms of approving and, and rewriting the lease in terms of the terms, or if you decide to take out that one statement on number 10.
Okay. Other thing is, the nurse program needs to grow and they can't grow in that space. And we've already got a, we're already going to have a place now, big enough for them. When they do their, not clinicals, but when they do their, uh, the, the.
Their check offs.
Their check offs. That's why, that space is so small. So this gives them one opportunity to, to grow out a little bit. It's a very nice space and it has office space as well as places for them to meet together and things like that. So it, it's just a, it's a good opportunity for, and it's, the, 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 uh, school district did an absolutely wonderful job on it. And it's well, it's well done. And so we move in and it's not a lot to do. Fred is concerned about, you know, their concern now is what is a classroom going to look like next year? Interestingly enough, you know, how many people can you put in a classroom because of COVID nineteen and all this stuff? So, I mean, you know, do you put eight, you, you don't put thirty anymore, you're going to have to put, you know, a seat, uh, maybe eighteen to ten to eighteen people in a classroom. So they have no room over there, so this is an opportunity for us to grow.
This would definitely allow us to spread out in the current space, um, even if we, even if we didn't go right away to our maximum number of forty. But I know the nursing staff is excited for that. The technology infrastructure in that building alone, um, the wiring that's been done is phenomenal. So, I mean, we, we can't even touch anything that we're doing right now on campus with that.
I have some questions, uh, if, if this is the time to ask them.
Yes.
Um, will we have to remodel and what will be the cost of that?
Great question. Um, on the learning center space itself, um, there would be very little remodeling we would have to do. Um, Dan, probably the only remodeling we might do is if we actually put in some walls to separate some spaces to, um, take a very large space and turn into two classrooms. But to frame a wall out wouldn't be hard. We'd make sure that we did, um, appropriate air return, um, in doing that. So, so the build out cost will be exceptionally small because of the work that the district's already done.
Will that presentation room stay about the same as it is now, the larger?
So, so the large presentation room is the space that's really under consideration. What would that look like if it stays a presentation room? Or that could become two very nice sized classrooms? So, so that's one space that's under consideration of building a wall in between just because that space is so large.
And the teacher, uh, prep room where they made their signs and projects for their classroom?
And, and at this point, with, if, with nursing coming in there, um, the plan right now, if we just move nursing in there, um, that open space in terms of what's kind of the, the make it, take it space, the resource space would stay open.
Okay. And, and our lease would be about seventy-seven thousand, five hundred a year? And then, uh, what's our liability insurance going to cost there? Do you know?
So, do you have any idea liability was?
Okay. And then I noticed on the contract, it says that we would be, uh, responsible for a share of, of keeping the parking lot up. And we, we'd be assessed each quarter of each year for maintenance of the parking lot.
Right.
And I figure that'd be nineteen percent, I suppose, of the parking lots.
And, and, and that's typically referred to in the, in the real estate world with leases as, as triple net. So you'd look at insurance, um, you'd look at utilities, um, you'd look at, at property tax deviation in that sense. So, so that would be pretty standard operating in terms of any lease arrangement. The one thing that we're excited about with that particular space is that's an amazingly good parking lot, just from a space standpoint. Um, you know, you've, you've got it lined already, you've got plenty of room all the way across. If we decided to, I, I don't think there'd be any harm in us coming back in and refreshing those lines. But I, I think at least in the, in the very short run, five to ten years, um, that parking lot's ingratiated.
Have you done an average cost on utilities monthly?
I have not, um, yet because of what we've looked at in different spaces. The lease costs here, uh, would be so low on a, a per square foot basis that, um, I've not looked at the utilities yet.
Okay. I, I disagree on that. I think it's fairly substantial, but, uh, you know, it's, uh, what is it, about sixty dollars a square foot or something like that?
No. So, so the way it works in terms of a, a lease is you take that seventy-seven thousand, you divide it by the square foot. So you'd have seventy thousand, seven thousand divided by twelve. And so you're really talking about total cost in would be roughly six, six and a half dollars a square foot.
Okay. And then, uh, I noticed that, uh, taxes, uh, do you, do you have a figure on that?
I, I don't. Again, I don't.
That's a, that's a trick question. I got the figure. It's, uh, nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and four cents a year on that space, our share of that.
So, so I, I, I guess, and, and, and not at all to, to challenge maybe the direction you're going, but I, I'm not sure where we would look at going with that program if we don't look at a, a ready made space already.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything like that. I'm saying, I think we should know the costs, you know, what the taxes are, what they have to keep on the parking lot may cost. There should be some figures out on, already. You know, I mean, because this company's owned this space for a long time.
Sure.
And they should know what the cost on the parking lot, all the maintenance on the parking lot and what utilities are going to run us. You know, I think we should know those things. I, I think the lease is a little long. And I think everybody on this board knows it. I think, you know, I, I've pushed it since I've got on the board. I think it's always better to own your own space than just to re, let, lease or rent a space. You know, I, I know, also know that it costs about two hundred dollars a square foot to build space. And so, uh, you know, I, I, I would hate for us to, to have, I'd hate for, I, I wouldn't like it to go for a ten year lease. If we could go to five plus five, I'd be more comfortable with it. I'm not uncomfortable with leasing this space. I think that ten years is a long time.
Absolutely.
And not knowing all the costs bothers me a, a bit also.
And, and I, I think what we've heard from a couple of other board members is, are there options beyond a ten year lease? And, um, board members asked if I would reach out to Mr. Gurkin and, and see if he was open to other options. He seems to be very open to the idea of a five with an option for another five. So knowing that if we do that, there would likely be an inflation factor in that second five years, but just the flexibility in being able to have a five plus five would probably warrant, um, even an increase in the second five years.
Well, I know you're all going to have a big smile on your face, but at one thousand Second Avenue, there's also another big space that four, four, three is vacating. And it, uh, it's not nearly as nice as the one we're looking at, but it, it's probably.
No parking.
Well, there's a big parking lot across the street.
At the library?
Yeah, north, south of the library.
What about the asbestos?
So, uh, well, I haven't, haven't killed off any administrators yet.
But, but you can't use it for, you can't use it for, for education. It encapsulates asbestos. So you can't do, do instruction there, the way I understand it. Plus, it's a very, very old building. I don't know how we would renovate to, to do this, plus it's not ADA compliant.
You couldn't dis, you couldn't be able to disturb that.
You couldn't disturb, no, it'd be prohibitive.
Well, I was thinking, it's not a, as a, a permanent resident for, residence for us. It certainly can't be that, shouldn't be that. But I think that it might not be too bad a stopgap for a year while we built something also, so.
Well, building is really prohibitive right now, especially in, in this environment. I mean, I, I just poured a concrete slab that was eight dollars a square foot. Eight dollars for a concrete slab. And this is six dollars lease for a year. Of course, we have the extra things. Six dollars a lease for a year, a concrete slab, eight dollars a square foot. And then even if these, we, we decided to do that, it would quite take a couple of years for, for the building to even be built. And I don't know if the four county taxpayers right now really want to see another building go up on their back. We have got a ton of space in this city that's open and vacant. It's a leasers market right now. So let's lease a facility and then see if these programs that we're looking forward to putting together actually grow before we start building, you know, building that might house nothing. So, no, you're right. I think ten years is a little long lease because we need flexibility. And that's why you were directed to look at a five plus five. And that'll give us options in the future. And then if these things do grow, I think everybody on the board likes the idea of having the campus, everything on campus.
Yeah.
But right now, to build something with these uncertain scenarios, we don't know what's going to happen tax wise for our communities. How many businesses are going to make it through this COVID nineteen thing? It's a, it's an uncharted territory. So I think.
Got an HLC too.
An HLC, yeah.
We just got out of a situation where we were, were supposed to debt service.
Yeah. We got, we got criticized by HLC for creating debt building buildings, namely dorms. And now we've got, thanks to Dr. Forgue, we've got our financial house in order, but yet we still have to get that under wraps. So.
You also never, you're never going to find another time where it's cheap to borrow money, as it is now either.
Yeah. I, I remember a campaign here just not too long ago, people were really charged the college of being improperly managed by sitting there creating such debt. So, anyway.
I want to bring up one thing. When you're done, Gary, on, on that number ten that, uh, Dr. Tatro was talking about on the right to lease, I think, you know, if we're going to look at taking that out or changing it, and it might address some of Dan's concerns is, and we don't know if it's really worth it or not, but I think we should have a first, if we're going to take that out, they should add in a first right of refusal. So if he does want to sell that building, they come to us first with that. By then, we could tell if the program's good. We may want to have that space for future development. Uh, we may not want to have that, but it could control who bought the place next to us and do that. And we could probably.
Good idea.
People when building a new building.
I think that's a great idea. And I, I think Mr. Gurkin would be very open to that.
I agree. Good idea.
Yeah. I agree too.
Please see that they're going to take care of that flat roof. They're in charge of that. That's, that's one blessing.
Okay. So, any other questions for Dr. Tatro on the lease? So there are some suggestions and some modifications. So pending that, do we still want to approve the lease as considered?
And, and, and I will gladly let you all direct me in terms of whether you want to do it tonight or you want those modifications to come back to you in May. The challenge is going to be if we're going to try to get into the space.
Yes.
We want to do that as quickly as possible. Hammer with the school district has given notice already that they will be out by May thirtieth. So we still have time in May. And I'm not suggesting that we do it tonight if there's any concern. But it would be wonderful to get in and, and be able to have the month of June and/or July to be able to frame walls and do some of that. So I'd love to do that.
Can we, can we pass it with the codicil that we, that it's a five by five?
Sure.
But he, you, you said you already talked to him and, and he was accepting the five by five?
Yeah. I, I think, I think we'd be great with a five by five. I think that if we can take out the, the mass statement of ten, we're good. I think the only question then is, does the board want to direct me to come back with the idea of, of working up right of first refusal language with Mr. Gurkin?
So, yeah. So Clayton was kind of directed, there were some issues when our work, work session yesterday, some trustees had an issue with the, the, the tenure. And they were preferring the five by five, five year, the five year option. And he was accepting of that.
He's very accepting.
Uh, I'm comfortable with striking that last line in item ten. And, uh, and I'm also comfortable with letting you have the latitude to just, to, to negotiate the first right of refusal. And since I believe time is of the essence here, especially when you're talking about, this is not a purchase, but, but this is a real estate move, um, that, um, I think we need to direct administration to, to move on these lease, uh, provide with, with these modifications.
I agree with that.
Okay. So do I have a motion to?
I make a motion to make those changes and give Dr. Tatro the latitude to go ahead and make those changes as we see fit.
I have one quick question. This is just on the learning center portion is what we're talking about now?
Correct. Correct. Just the learning center. You know? So are you comfortable? Are you comfortable with the second on that, Dan? Cause you.
I, I am comfortable with the seconding that. I, I just, I do have one more question or one more comment, I guess. And that's, I hope when we do future things like this that we're, you know, I'm going to ask questions, that we get all the money facts so I could, you know, I mean, taxes, some people on, all that in line before we bring it for approval.
I hear you.
I'm, I'm in favor of renting this space, but I, I just kind of like to have the details.
Sure.
Very good.
Very good.
Okay. Motion second, and then we're in the discussion phase. So any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Moving on to the electrical technology program.
So it, it's amazing to me when I think that, um, the, the work that we've been able So, it, it's amazing to me when I think that, um, the, the work that we've been able to do, um, really since December, um, the readiness that we've seen not only from the community, from the staff, um, from the board in terms of being able to grow and develop new technical programs as well. And, and I think there's, um, really a readiness and a ripeness to, to look at new opportunities. We've talked at some length about the Senate bill funding, and I think that you're gonna have another opportunity here with these two new programs. Um, electrical technology, and we can start there, it's a one-year program. Would be able to have, um, two different cohorts, a morning cohort and an afternoon cohort, um, roughly 30 credit hours over the course of two semesters. It would be a certificate program. Um, as of yet, there would not be an associate degree option. Uh, but what this would do is this would prepare students to go and become an apprentice electrician or electrician apprentice, um, and be able to actually set for the written exam that would lead them to the journeyman. So a journeyman electrician requires two years of full-time on-the-job training, um, in order to become a, a certified journeyman electrician. The students in this program will be able to set for that written exam. They won't have the two years' experience, but they'll have that level of training to do that. Um, we know that there's a need in the community for this type of training. Um, we've had nothing but exceptionally positive response from the community, from the school district, from business and industry. We had an amazing advisory committee meeting, um, in order to get the program launched. And just the response from, from our, our small businesses has been phenomenal. Um, as I said, we do have a very large business in town that is talking with us about maybe sending their employees, um, to us with the idea of maybe even filling our afternoon class that first year. So I'm really excited for what this could bring to the college. And, and, and just that ruality of, of the small-town nature of what we're doing. Um, if we want students to stay in southwest Kansas, it's this type of skilled labor that's gonna become important to, to keep our, our small communities strong in southwest Kansas.
In this field, you say it's a certificate, is there anything to be gained with an AS program?
So we would need to really get creative. I'm not saying that we can't package it into a larger AS. Yeah, there's definitely something to be gained for an AS.
Is...
Um, what that would do in, in terms of any type of promotional abilities, any type of management responsibilities, any type of, um, growth within an organization. Um, more and more of our, um, folks are requiring an AS degree. This particular program, um, the same way that some of our other short-term programs don't necessarily lend itself to an AAS. We'd wanna get some, we'd wanna get creative in terms of packaging it that way, but, but there's definitely some advantage there. Um, this is meant to be a one-year program, get them in, get them out, get them on the job.
Okay. All right. I think this is neededness, is that, I think Kelly brought it, brought it up just a little bit ago, train them here.
Right.
Train them here.
Well, and, and the board certainly said this, but I think this is important, if you'll indulge me, for the, for the, the board meeting and for the, the public record. We know a lot about tech ed students. We know that tech ed students, as a rule, stay one of two places, either within 60 miles of where they grew up or 60 miles of where they got their training. So if we can provide both opportunities for those students, um, tech ed students are likely to stay in southwest Kansas.
Okay. Any questions on this? Not? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, Dan made the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Turley?
Yep.
Further discussion? Okay, further discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Uh, President, I'm just a little bit lost. I've got pages 68 through, uh, six and six through eight. I have a lot of figures on them, it's proposed healthcare tech program, but it don't have a...
That was actually part of the discussion, Dan, for the, um, the lease, for the, um, learning center space. I wanted you to see those figures so you could see what types of revenues would be coming in because of the opportunity to use the allied health building, uh, for the healthcare tech.
Well, I thought maybe it's part of, but we didn't ever get back to the, to that part.
Right, no, great, great, great point, great...
HS, HS students are high school, I guess, and TS students are...
Post-secondary.
Post-secondary students, okay.
Yep, you're exactly right.
Okay, I'm guessing, okay.
All right, moving on to item F, the climate energy, the HVAC program.
Right, so climate energy control technology is, is a fancy way to talk about HVAC, but I think there's some real value in the words that we use. Um, climate energy control really goes beyond the grant turning of HVAC. So much of that industry is going digital, it's going into the cloud. Um, they're truly control technicians rather than just HVAC, um, mechanics. So I think that's an important distinction. Um, if we go full bore, um, with our design over the course of three to five years, um, we would likely become a, um, partner with Trane, Ingersoll Rand, and look at putting a Trane lab into, um, whatever space we decide. Um, climate energy control, um, would be either a one-year, uh, full-time program that would take roughly 10 months, or it would be a two-year, part-time program that would cover four semesters. Um, the way the state of Kansas is designed in terms of what they call program alignment, you have two different options with this program. You have what's called a 30B, which cannot be more than 45 credit hours, and you have an associate degree option. So students in this program would have both the 30B option at 44 credits or the associate degree option. So they would have that AS option to do that. Um, like I said, there's gonna be a lot more, um, investment here in terms of equipment. But as we talked about in the work session, there will be significant sharing back and forth with the electrical program and the climate energy control program, not only in terms of equipment, but also in terms of supplies, um, and presumably in terms of space as well.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be a lot of synergies, a lot of, a lot of...
Absolutely. And the same excitement and enthusiasm that we've heard across the community for the electrical technology program is there, um, right in line here. And, and I'm really excited about what these two programs could mean for us when you tie into building construction. Because you could go from building construction right into electrical. You could go from electrical right into climate energy control. You could go from building right into climate energy control. I, I think there's just some real synergy that comes with these technical trainings and, and these skilled craftsmen pieces that, that rolls as well.
Yeah, you make the case of them going kinda hand-in-hand and, and so...
Very much.
And it's kinda save some cost by having, you know, the electrical and, and, uh, climate and energy together, so that's...
I, I think, I think you're gonna see some huge synergy in space along.
Yes. And one of the concerns in this community is, is housing.
Yeah.
This, this fits right into housing. I mean, people, we don't have enough houses. I know people are looking for, for homes to move into, and there, there's not that many compared to what... Now, they're building them as fast as they can. I know, I know they are, but we, we, we need more. Right. Any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Roger.
Maya? And Jim? Did you catch that, Carla? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Forgie, healthcare committee recommendation.
Thank you. The college is very fortunate to have a excellent self-funded health insurance program. In fact, it is one of the selling points, I guess, recruiting aspects, when we try to recruit faculty and staff, and we indicate that as a tremendous benefit. And it has been such through prudent student stewardship of the board that, uh, the fund, uh, has been healthy. Uh, we have not had to increase premiums for faculty or staff in a number of years. Each year, we evaluate that fund and receive a recommendation from our health insurance consultant regarding the carrier and any need to make adjustments. And this year, we met with, uh, Mr. Hilliard, um, on April the 21st. And during that meeting, he, uh, his analysis was that the fund this next year, uh, the expenses would exceed revenues by about $300,000. And his proposals at that time, he had a couple of different options, uh, but that's a 14% more or less increase to the fund balance. So his, some of his options were to have share the cost to the employee and the college, or have the college bear the burden of the increase. Uh, I was pretty adamant that, given the, uh, fact that we were going to need additional funds for, in the budget for next year for the much-needed expansion in our workforce and career programs, that increasing the burden to the college was not an option. The budget just couldn't handle it. And given the fact that, uh, uh, there are uncertain economic conditions, uh, it was not gonna be fair to increase the, uh, premium to the employee. And so I asked him to go back and do some more number crunching, and, uh, so we met again on Thursday, and I had additional time to review our fund balance. And at that time, I, I considered that our fund balance was about $2.3 million, which is very, very healthy. Last year's about 1.7 at this time. And so based on those factors, uh, we considered that, hey, the fund was significant enough that we could absorb a $300,000, uh, expenses over revenues this next year, not have to affect the college budget or the salaries to the employees. And so we recommended to go with the, the lowest carrier that, uh, EBMS. They go out and survey, and I think there were 12 respondents, but they, they found a, a insurance carrier that would keep the premiums as low as possible and, uh, keep the expenses down as much as possible also.
Stop-loss thing?
Yes, sir. No changes in the plan.
And I, I think one of the things that...
Hang on. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, I think one of the things that's important that, that people know, that faculty know is that, uh, that this, this can't happen every year for, for, like, too many years in a row, okay? But I do agree that that was and is the way to go this year, with that kind of a fund balance.
I don't mind increasing the premium when we increase salaries. But if we don't increase premiums, uh, salaries, and then you increase premiums, that's, that's kinda taking money out of people's pocket. And right now, you know, with economic stimulus, we're trying to, you know, help people out. We don't certainly wanna take money away from them.
Exactly.
Uh, Doctor, Doctor, this is Jim. Uh, on your healthcare, with the $300,000 loss, uh, $300,000 not dollar loss, but the $300,000 that, that, uh, you have the possibility, at a, at a, at a 100% of, uh, of, uh, your claims, so now you're only maybe insuring up to, what, 85%? And maybe I'm not making myself quite clear enough?
Yeah, I, I'm not understanding your question.
Okay, so basically when, uh, Doc, when Mr. Hilliard comes in and talks to you, if you look at your claims and you look at whoever they're lasering you with, if you have any, and you put all that together, and basically if you fund a X, then you have no other risk after that. Now, we're not funding quite all the way to X because we know we've got, we'd have to increase our premiums 300,000 either between the college and between the, the faculty and administration. So now with not doing that, what, uh, are we insuring like at 90% of that amount? Or 85, or do you, do, would you happen to know, and that may be, uh, I guess that's a question I get. And again, I don't even know how much you guys collect, but, uh, you know, I've worked with Dr. Hilliard for years.
Well, it wouldn't be changing, the plan would, plan would not change.
No.
And, and so the college would pay...
I lost you there on your sound. You guys hear me now?
We hear you fine, yeah.
I don't hear you guys at all.
You don't, you don't hear, you don't hear me?
No, I'm not hearing anybody. Well, gosh darn it.
Uh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
So Maya, you hear us? And Bill, Kathy?
Yes.
Everybody else hears? Something happened with Jim's connection.
Oh, his connection.
So I, did you... I'm not, there he is, there he is. You're back, can you hear him? Jim? Jim? Yeah, he's not getting audio.
Push the audio at the... Well, he can't hear us.
Yeah, he can't hear us. He should be able to hear us. So I think he's having, I think he's having, uh, bandwidth problems because he didn't do anything to change, we didn't do anything to change, and you're, you're all hearing us, so... Um, maybe we'll follow up with Jim, uh...
We can do that.
Later, we'll follow up with Jim later on his question, 'cause... You weren't quite following his question.
That projection of, uh, was it Brent that came to see you, one of his sons?
It was Brian, Brian Hilliard.
Okay, Brian, that Brian brought... What was that projection based upon?
Well, it's based on historical, what we did this last year, which I think last year was kind of a spike. Maybe we had some, some additional expenditures that we probably won't have next year. So again, his projection may not happen, but, but, so it's just a projection, but it's based on what has happened.
Can you hear us, can you hear us, Jim? Jim?
You have some employees that are laser...
Yeah, we had some really big, one over $400,000.
Yeah, I'm gonna call him. I'm gonna call you.
Do you want me to call him?
You want to call him?
Well, I was in charge of the 443 insurance and...
But, yeah, it was...
Yeah, when you get a leave...
They were going pretty good, and then all of a sudden, just, we just had a big bubble this year, just a big spike. So I, I actually think with this projection, I, I kinda questioned his projection, but that's what it was.
Yes.
I don't know that it'll be that high next year.
Well, they're pretty good. It may not be a...
Hey, we may just call you in this way. Um, we may have to, we can see you now, but then we just...
$30,000.
Third time's the...
Yeah, that, that has, that's been that way. It hasn't changed.
Can you hear us now? Yeah, I mean... Okay. Do you want me to just leave you my phone with, um, with Gary so you can hear?
He's on, he's on mute. He's on mute.
You now.
My problem is, I, yeah, I know you can hear me, but I can't hear you.
There he is.
Yeah.
There he is.
Well, he, he... But Kathy, he cannot hear us.
Yeah, just through Clayton's phone.
Yep. So we'll, we'll link through Jim through Clayton's phone.
Turn your phone off, 'cause we're getting feedback.
Yeah, you're gonna get a lot of feedback. Mut, mute your line there, Jim. Okay, there we go. Okay. So, uh, Jim, to your, your question, uh, Glendon was trying to address it and talk about the projections and about how maybe there was a spike from last year that maybe we think that we won't have that, that skew things for next year.
Yeah, I think, uh, we had a spike this year that affected, uh, what we'll, that they have projected next year. I, I don't think it's... Put in.
You got it.
He, he gave us thumbs up.
He got it, he gave us thumbs up.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Are you good, Jim?
I think his phone went out too.
Okay. You, you good, Jim? Thumbs up?
Yes.
Oh, okay. You hear us now, well, he can, he...
I can, I can...
Okay, maybe not, okay.
I can hear you well now.
Great.
All right, good.
Sorry.
Thanks, Maya. Problem solved. Okay, are you good then?
You talking to me? I, I never did hear, but I can talk to, to Doctor about this later. I just know that, uh, that, uh, we go through this every year, and a lot of times we don't fund 100% because that's really not been our track record. But, uh, and we've got, and I agree with you, we've got an awful lot of reserves. But, you know, the problem that happens when we lower the amount of employees, that's less money going in, and of course, less risk because we have some too, so, uh...
So Jim, if I could pipe in a little bit, that's exactly what happened. So we have 11 less people on the plan for this fiscal year due to the budget cuts that we did last year, so that's one. Um, two, we had four lasers that you're referring to, so one exceeded $400,000. So obviously with the, um, the lasers, that was an extended cost. They originally priced us at an increased stop-loss rate, um, but we asked Brian Hilliard to go back and renegotiate that, so they left the stop-loss. So we are funding it 100%, but it's still gonna be less. And it won't be an increase in the college premium or the employee premium. We're just counting that if we have another skewed year, which is what this was, it'll just dip into those reserves that I know you're familiar with. If that answers a little bit better what you're asking.
That really helps. So you do have a $400,000 laser?
We, we did have, uh, we had four lasers this year, yes, and one did exceed that amount. It was quite expensive.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the renewal?
The motion should move. I thought the motion should move.
All right, Dan made the motion. Do I have a second? Jim, was that a second?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Jim, second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay. Moving on, we pulled item six out of the consent, so we'll take up item six right now. That's the public information officer.
This, I'm not sure why we need this position and a sports information director. Why can't the information director, we're a pretty small college and we do not have a large sports program. It just seems like a competent information director could do both.
So if I could touch on it a little bit, so the sports information director does a few things. One, we have a requirement through the conference that we are required to stat all home basketball games. It's preferred that we do other sports, however, it's a requirement of men's and women's basketball. So for one, that's one role that they would do that obviously a public information officer wouldn't do. And then also, we are a smaller community college, but we are actually a rare community college. We have 17 sports, which is a huge number compared to some of the other community colleges around the country, not necessarily Kansas, but the country. And so with that, this person then is responsible for statting all home games. They do travel to some away games for statting those. And then obviously, they do all of the marketing and the public information for the athletic program and all 17 sports, so they're writing all of the sports bios, they're writing the articles on the sports teams and things of that sort. Versus the public information officer, which would have been really useful during this time that we're facing right now, obviously, our marketing department, you know, they are working on writing stories and getting graphics out and making videos. However, our public information officer could be spearheading and could be working with Vice President Tama for the COVID-19 updates and things of that sort. They'll take over all the media releases and so the SID will probably funnel through the public information officer to an extent. It's also just a way to better reach the community by separating those duties. And then also the PIO will oversee a lot more event planning, both in the community and here on campus, whereas the SID won't have really any role in that capacity.
And Dan, that is an absolutely wonderful question. I was hoping someone would ask that question. We've moved, we've actually moved Andrea into, basically she's doing, she's going to be recruiting, as you know, and she'll be fabulous at that as well as doing the marketing piece, which obviously, we're concerned about our enrollment. Our enrollment's down and so, and it's been down for a few years. And so my thing is, is she understands, I think she's got some exciting ideas, she's going to do a lot of great things with our recruiting and our enrollment, and that's what she's going to spend most of her time, as well as using the marketing to do that. The PIO, I came up with this, I had this concept 20 years ago and a lot of colleges and universities use this. Now, this person is going to be more like a Kerry Baker. I had one in my last institution, more like Kerry Baker. Kerry's done an absolutely great job with the 443. But they also, we're at a new normal, so we're really, really wanting to do a lot more communication. Every time somebody says, "We're not communicating enough," and so I want to make sure we're communicating. This person's also going to be doing a lot of college events, planning those things like graduation, like, you know, Hall of Fame, all the kinds of things. There's a lot of things that we do here. I mean, I went and talked to a young man on the radio a couple of days ago about all the events that we're not going to be doing, including graduation and other things. And it's just an opportunity for this person to help us also with crisis management. You know, who knows if we'll have another one of these? We may have another one in November. So there's a lot of communications out there that needs to happen and I'm real proud of Fred, what he does and what Kerry and Fred do. So I do think this is a good opportunity for us to do that. Really honestly, and I brought Jake in the room because honestly, these two people are totally different and I agree with you on that end. So you have to almost explain it. I know Gary's asked me a couple of times, "What does a PIO do?" And so they're involved with Twitter, they're involved with LinkedIn, they're involved with Facebook, they're involved with every kind of operation, and they also monitor that.
Does it help with marketing also?
It will, it will, oh yeah. But I think communication has, you know, communication has changed so much these days. I mean, you know, usually you put an article in the newspaper and everybody read and everybody know. That's not the way it is anymore, you know, with all the devices that people have. And so I'm going to be looking for someone with some IT experience also. And I know what we're working with Mike and with Austin, we have a webmaster. And so I'm glad you did ask that question because that's something that I had in my last two institutions and it works well. Because we got to get that, we've got to sell ourselves. And this is a great time, it's a new normal, everybody's at ground zero right now, all the 19 community colleges and not everybody. And so our job is to get out there and sell ourselves and make sure that we grow this place.
Well, I don't want to lose faculty positions. I don't want to be down 11 people and then, I don't know whether those are mostly faculty positions or not, and then replace those 11 with, you know, I mean, I want-
You're not replacing anybody because Andrea, there was a position for enrollment manager. So we moved Andrea to that position and so this person's taking over Andrea's job at a lot, much lesser salary.
So one of them's a new position, right?
So the PIO is, and so currently there's two positions, right? We have a Director of Enrollment Management, Director of Marketing. And so by eliminating the enrollment management and combining it with marketing, then we're going to hire the PIO at a lesser rate, which will save us about $15,000 to $20,000, depending on the qualification of that individual, obviously. And then how it'll differentiate is that then Andrea's role will be creating the marketing materials and marketing to the students to get students on campus, people in seats, things of that sort, the admissions side of it. Then the PIO is to serve the community of Dodge City. And their role is to make sure that we are getting the information out there, communicating the way we need, delivering our new message with all of the progress that we've made over the last several years, things of that sort.
The other piece, Christy-
Hey, Jacob, could you stand? Get up closer where Glendon was.
The other piece is, in Andrea's current title, she is marketing and public relations.
Right, it'll all eliminate those.
So that's, the public relations part really comes out of that and goes to the PIO officer.
Right, which is what I'm referring to, the students, rather than her going out to the chamber coffees and the chamber banquet and doing those things, the PIO will take on that role so Andrea's main focus can be.
If you look at what we're doing in workforce and trying to really grow that, we've got to tell that story to entirety of Southwest Kansas to get that draw. And we, like Harold says, we've got to sell ourselves, we've got to get that out on everybody's radar screen. And then on the sports side, I was talking to a person at the paper saying, "We just don't have those people doing those stories anymore at the papers." So if you ever want to get your sports stories out, you're going to have to pull that internal if you're ever going to talk about sports or Harold, that your success is in sports in the media. So it's, a lot of this is coming down to us.
That's unfortunately, unfortunately, part of hiring an SID right now is hiring a part-time sports writer for the paper because they don't have a sports writer. So we have to, obviously, we're using it for our purposes, we're getting it on our website and then putting that out in our social media, but we're not getting anything in the paper unless we create it. So that's the other part of promoting. And we've, you know, we do, all through this year, we went without one and we did post-game articles on stuff, but it wasn't at the level that it probably should be. I mean, and did we get every track meet? Did we get out, we didn't get all of that stuff just because we were a person short this year.
Well, you know, since I've been on the board, I've been pushing that we get out there more, that we market ourselves better, that we get into high schools, that we start getting people in here. And if this will help, I'm on for it.
Well, it's amazing how much we're in the high school now, how much we talk to high schools.
How much we weren't.
How much we weren't. You're exactly right.
I totally agree with you. I'm not going to disagree.
Oh, but he disagrees with that one.
Nope.
So any more questions on items six and nine? Go ahead, Maya. Or Kathy, Kathy, sorry, sorry.
I hope they have the enthusiasm that our cheer coach does because he can market everything and any-
That's the key, is getting those people with that kind of energy to get out there and promote this school and to promote our students. So that's the key, is making sure you have that high level of energy, absolutely.
I need to go over and take some lessons from the debate forensics coach over at the high school. That person got their people on the front page all year long.
Absolutely.
And they wrote the story for it.
Yeah.
Yes.
They did, yep.
Just changed, she wrote it. Okay, so I would like to have a motion to approve items six and nine.
I shall move.
Dan moves to approve both. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bill Turley, seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry, sorry.
How, I want to know, because these are very specific jobs, how are we going to get that out, to get the applicants in for that pizzazz?
So, are you thinking about SID or are you talking? Well, I'll answer both. For the SID, we have a lot of athletic outlets that we get out. There's NJCAA, the KJCCC, and sports information director, there's actually, well, I'm sorry, we've already hired the sports information director, but we do advertise on the SID website as well. For the PIO, we can advertise on a lot of different outlets. I advertise in all of the Kansas newspapers, which is somewhat of an older advertising, but we still do it to get out to the community. I also am a part of a program called Handshake, which is an online platform that reaches out to new graduates from universities across the country. And so it's something that colleges can advertise on their boards for new graduates. Actually, Dr. Howard introduced me to it a while back and it's been really successful. And then we also advertise on higher ed jobs and a lot of other national websites.
And on the PIO, there, I have an idea, I have somebody, now depending on if she's qualified, well, she is, but there are people out there that do that. And it is a specific field, and I want this person to have some IT experience and I want them to know about IT. Also want them to know a little bit about online education.
I have one question, and I don't know if it's appropriate time to it. In going through the consent agenda, and maybe I should have brought it up when Dan did, but I'm kind of new at this, I just had one question when we were looking at renewing basketball coaches' jobs at Board Policy. 803.4 states that we don't offer any more than a one-year contract on any coaching position?
That's a really good question, and it's a good time to kind of discuss it. I get this question, I had this question two January's ago with the new board as well. So currently at Dodge City Community College, there's only two employees that are on contract. That is the president of the college and that is our provost. Oh, I apologize, and obviously our faculty. Our faculty are on contract per the negotiated agreement. All other staff, administration and coaches, they are all on what we call employment appointments and that verbiage does make a difference. The appointments are subject to the at-will employer regulations of the state of Kansas. And so coaches apply to that. And so when that board policy was written, there were contracts and so oftentimes, you know, at the end of a football season or the end of a basketball season, either a coach moves on to another institution or perhaps the season didn't go the way that they wanted it to go and maybe the college makes the decision to let that coach go. And then the college is left with the burden of that price or the cost then of paying out that contract till the end of the fiscal year because all of our other appointments go July 1 to June 30. And so if you let a football coach go in November, then we as a college were paying the price all the way from November to June 30 to pay out the contract. So at the time when the policy was written, they changed it so that the contracts ran at different dates than the regular staff in order to kind of get, in order to kind of control that and put a cap on what was spending. So if you wanted at the end of football season to let a football coach go or at the end of basketball season to let a basketball coach go, we weren't stuck with that cost. The policy is not quite as relevant now that we go to appointments because we are employer at will and we can make that decision at any time and we don't do a severance package or anything of that sort unless there's extenuating circumstances. So it's not quite as relevant, but we do still recognize it just so it is the opportunity for a coach whether we want to renew them or not.
My thought on that, it's, we just hired a men's basketball coach and, you know, I don't know how other junior colleges do it, I don't know how other colleges do it, you know, to offer an extension of more than one year. I think that would make it hard to get somebody to come and take over a football program or a basketball program that's been struggling, knowing that, you know, if the first year doesn't go good or second year doesn't go good and you're working on things and maybe the general public doesn't see internal improvement or things going on, that you may not be able to draw the best candidates because they think, you know, one year and I'm out of here.
So far, I see what you're saying. So far it's not been an issue. We had over 100 applicants for men's basketball and we had close to 100 applicants for football. I do understand what you're saying. A lot of schools, they do do that three-year contract, the five-year contract, so I absolutely understand where you're coming from. It hasn't been an issue for us, but I think if it did become one, then we could obviously approach the board and if they were comfortable providing a contract, then that's something we could work on with Glenn, no problem, and we could write a contract. So currently, it's not practice, currently it's not practice for us to put any of our staff or staff, coaches or administrators, other than the president and provost, on contract. They're on appointment.
Yeah, it can work both ways too. You get some young guy in here, it does really good, you don't want him to leave without being penalized if he went out of his salary either too, so.
Absolutely.
Both ways.
To add to that, Kelly, Christie, could you, doesn't have to be right away, but could you maybe reach out to several of the colleges, El Dorado, you know, Hutch, and see if they have the same type of, I don't know if we want to use the word stipulations as we have or the one-year contract, so we got something to compare to?
Yeah, we could actually, go ahead.
I can actually answer that question right now. There are only three community colleges, no, I take that back, four community colleges in the state that have any coach on contract. Coffeyville's men's basketball coach, and that was done years ago and it's on a rollover process now. He is the only coach that's still there from when that process started and he is still on that, on a rollover contract. Butler has, I believe, two, maybe three on contract now. Hutchinson has a few more. They've actually gone to a contract, however, most of them are one-year contracts and not multiple-year contracts. And then Garden City has one football coach that is on contract as well, so. But for the most part, it's pretty common practice across the state to do it just like we are doing. And part of that is, it's been a little bit of guidance from above us encouraging this.
And like I said, it just kind of eases the burden of the cost of paying out those contracts, so it's a cost-saving measure.
Doesn't seem quite fair to an employee, though. You've asked them to come from Timbus II to Dodge City and then they don't have a good season. Maybe they don't have good players.
Yeah.
And, you know, sometimes you can't make a silly first out of town here. But, you know, and all of a sudden they get, and they move all the way out here, move their stuff out here and the season's over and they say, and we tell them, "You're done, you know, we're not even going to pay you until June."
It's not, it's not in writing, but I can tell you it's not practice of Dr. Nolte or the administration to let someone go after one year. Generally, just because I know working with Dr. Nolte, again, this is not written anywhere, but Dr. Nolte normally abides by the three-year rule, you know, give that coach a chance to recruit, bring in their own team and really see what they can do. And after three years, you know, after a real period of observation, if they're not making the progress in the areas for which we prioritize, you know, then we can evaluate it then. But there's more, there's more to coaching than training. There's, you know, the whole education and going to class part as well, so.
And I also was in AD for 24 years.
But I see your point.
Okay. With that, I think we don't have any unfinished business. Is there any new business that you would like to bring to the board?
We need to vote on that.
On what? Do we not finish? Oh, that's right, that was in discussion. We never did finalize the vote. Thank you, Kathy. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay. Now, no unfinished business and is there any new business? Seeing none, and there is no executive session, so we are done for the night, so meeting, pardon, Kathy, or Carla?
We do need to approve the consent agenda as revised.
Oh, okay. Yes, my bad. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised?
Don't move.
Let's all move.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Jim and Dan?
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. We are-
People out there are a little slow tonight.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.